... The United States of America into a republic for which it stands, on the nation of your God, the universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gunn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A tax assessors' report for hearing date to be held March 28, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B minutes of the Scranton firefighters' pension commission meeting held February 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held February 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D minutes of the Scranton police pension commission meeting held February 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3E minutes of the composite pension board meeting held February 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3F agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held March 21, 2018.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3G agenda for the city planning commission meeting to be held February 28, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements? I might have just one. City Hall will be closed this Friday, March 30th in observation of Good Friday. DPW will be working this day. DPW crews will be off on Easter Monday, April 2nd. Refuse and recycling will be one day behind next week.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodewanitz.
Repeating my question from March 12th until March 19th, if we have an updated status on the Arcataz study on stormwater management, I'm interested in when those findings will be released and if you're going to schedule a public caucus, and if so, where and when. Do we have any information on that?
Just that we're anticipating the draft very soon, and I certainly would welcome a public caucus.
Yeah, I hope that council, you know, plans, once you get the findings released to you, that turn it around to the public, preferably in the form of a caucus, public caucus.
Absolutely.
And a question from last week. I attended the meeting you had with the county commissioners regarding reassessment. My sensing was that the mayor is not inclined to bring suit to force a reassessment. So I'm wondering, what's the next step in this odyssey? Do we have, does the administration have a plan going forward? Do you as the council have a plan going forward?
I discussed this with the mayor, actually, right after that meeting. I know he does want to see the information provided from the county and see the analysis by Evan Weiss. Personally, I feel a little bit different. I feel that council needs to continue moving forward. I would like to have another meeting with the commissioners to see if there's any progress, but at that point, if there's not, a decision needs to be made whether to move down the path of a lawsuit or to just say, well, the county commissioners have the say and they decided not to do it.
Yeah, I would not like to see reassessment go on the back burner. I think it needs to be addressed. Also, my question that you answered in caucus regarding the controllers' report, thank you for finding out that the $377,000 court award was for the RSM payment for the pocket park on the corner of Linden and Wyoming, and the $105,000 to FabCor was for litigation. So at least it clears it up somewhat, because that's, you know, $482,000 total, so that was a lot of money. And finally, I've been reading the articles on the parking at Steam, marketplace at Steamtown, and I'm trying to figure out what is the policy, because it seems Mr. Basaliga and ABM are not on the same sheet of music. I'm assuming that ABM has, it's got the contract, it's going to be their rules and their regulations, but if you can shed any light on, you know, who's in charge and what's the policy down there. One thing I didn't see in the newspaper is the employees that work there, you know, they were never addressed. I walked over and talked to some of my friends who do work at that mall, and they basically told me that it looks like their parking fees for employees are being rolled into the lease. So in other words, the employees are not daily paying a fee, but the business or the entity is paying that as an addition to the lease. If you have any information on, you know, clear that up. I understand that the policy was to go in effect today. It would be nice to know exactly what that policy is and have Mr. Basaliga and ABM come to some kind of agreement.
Well, I expect what was in the paper to be what's happening today.
Say again?
I expect what we all saw in the paper was what was going to happen today.
Okay.
And I firmly believe that ABM is running the garage and they're the decision maker in this.
I expect it would be ABM too, but it's confusing to the general public, and we don't want to discourage people from patronizing the stores and the businesses down there. That doesn't do anyone any good.
I agree.
And, but I never saw anything clarified about what was going to happen to employees that worked there, and there are quite a few employees in that entire mall. Hopefully, they are not getting socked, but they are indirectly if it's going into the lease, so. And I hope that the BA's office is eagerly working on the 2017 audit. One of the things I'll be very interested in seeing in that audit is litigation and the significance and impact of the various suits that the city is facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman.
My friends, our Mr. Evans has the audacity to belittle, to demean 26,488 intelligent, informed citizens on the reassessment issue compared to his 13,456 losers. That's two to one, but we still lost. How did we still lose? I'm going to tell you how, because once again, this council has abused the trust the people of this city put in them, that's how, in order to achieve their own agenda, this reassessment Mr. Evans, I don't know about you. You ridiculed Mrs. Cummings and Mr. O'Malley, their supporters, with that feeble attempt of humor. That was needless. I don't know, I guess that's the best you had. You people have clouded this issue with distortions and misrepresentation of the facts. The fact is, the city is in dire need of money. The only way to get money is millage, and you know it. Millage, 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 the raise of taxes is the only thing you've got left. All this nonsense, taxes are going to go a third up, a third down, and a third the same. Your rule of thumb is nonsense and nothing more. This other idea that what goes up, part of it'll come down, it's not going to be like that. These people that can't afford a lawyer to object to this high tax raises, they're going to be in deep doo-doo, and you know it. All the grants and loans given to the city have just dried up the taxpayers' funds. There's no more state money coming in. You've given away $3 million you didn't have to. This administration is just, it's just been so mismanaged, it's unbelievable. If there was any inkling of truth in this third, and a third, and a third. Last week, I agreed with you. I said, raise it, lower it, whatever you want to do, just leave the 75-year-old properties as they were. That's even, that would make it even higher than your rule of thumb. They don't need to be reassessed, but no, not a one of you commented on it. That's because you have nothing in your agenda but to sue the city if you don't get your own way. You ever heard of something so ridiculous? You're going to use our tax money to sue us with? I agree with Brother Bob, this, all five of you don't belong up there anymore. I don't know, these people ought to be coming down here in Groves to protect their property. I don't know where they are. That's what you rely on, that nobody in this city is listening or something. This council, this mayor, Mosso and Bizoni, have destroyed this city down to its core. There's just hardly anything left, and it's your fault. You have turned your backs on the people that put you in those seats. Let me brag about one thing. I'm proud to say I didn't vote for a one of you sitting there, and I didn't vote for the mayor, thank God. You can't hold me responsible for this mess that's going on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard Hetman.
Good evening, counsel. Gerard Hetman from Lackawanna County Department of Community Relations. First, I'd like to mention tonight, we actually have a larger poster for, and it's a familiar item, one the council and the city have supported very well before, and that is the annual Armed Forces Parade that takes place each year in the month of May to mark Armed Forces Week in the city of Scranton and the surrounding area. This year, the parade takes place on Saturday, May 19th, 11:00 a.m. It begins at the usual spot in front of the Genome Early Veterans Center on Penn Avenue in downtown Scranton. The parade takes its normal route up Penn Avenue, taking a left onto Lackawanna Avenue, and then a final left on North Washington Avenue, wrapping up at the reviewing stand in front of the Lackawanna County Courthouse. This year, the parade committee is pleased to announce that we'll be having the Ronald McDonald House, the annual Show Your Stripes 5K race. Normally, that takes place in the fall at Naug Park, but this year, the organizers, working in conjunction with the parade committee, were able to move it to the same day as the Armed Forces Parade. The race will start at 9:00 o'clock, followed by the parade at 11:00. So we think it'll be a good draw, more activity downtown, more folks on the streets, try to maybe put the two events together to make a bigger and better day and get more folks out for the parade, which we've all tried to do in the past. Anyone interested in entering a group into the parade or volunteering or contributing in any capacity is asked to call 570-961-2696, or 570-496-8932. Again, the parade committee really has some new energy this year, some new folks who are on board from some of the local military units, as well as from Toby Hannah Army Depot, and we think it's going to be an improvement over the good results we've had in recent years. So please help us join and make it better, make it bigger, grow it, and pay even better tribute to the men and women of our armed forces and our veterans. Second, the annual Hop on the Trolley excursions with the Easter Bunny at the Electric City Trolley Museum are set for this Saturday, March 31st. There are departures with the Easter Bunny on the trolley at 10:30 a.m., noon, 1:30 p.m., and 3:00 o'clock p.m. Regular prices apply to all rides. There will be arts and crafts and balloon art from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Trolley Museum. There'll be coloring sheets and candy for all children on the excursions. All gift shop purchases will be 10% off. In the case of inclement weather, everything will take place indoors, the trolley won't run, but the Easter Bunny will still visit the museum, and all the other activities and giveaways will be in effect. For more information or for tickets for the excursions, call the Trolley Museum at 570-963-6590. Also, two items from our Parks and Recreation Department as we head into the summer season, as the weather gets warmer finally. Lifeguards are needed for each of the four county parks. Each of the parks in our system now has swimming available. We need lifeguards to staff all of those facilities. Lifeguards need to have their current lifeguard certification and CPR certification from the American Red Cross prior to beginning employment. Anyone interested in working as a lifeguard can call the Parks and Recreation Office at Also, our master schedule programs is now available for our Parks and Recreation Department, and a number of those programs are open for registration. Many of them again are oriented towards youth, middle school and high school age students, sometimes younger. Some of them though are for adults, especially our leagues or our one-off competitions such as the Bochi Tournament. The programs now open for registration include our outdoor basketball clinic, gymnastics clinic, and junior golf clinic. We'll have more than that will open up later in the year, including our youth soccer clinic and our youth tennis clinic and tournaments. And of course, we're always open to new suggestions, so anyone that would give us an item that maybe kids today are having fun with that would be good to add, skateboarding, lacrosse, whatever else, whatever the hot trend is, we're always open to looking at that. We just have to put it in for the next budget cycle because the schedule for this year is already budgeted and set. But we're always open to anything that might come up out there. So if your Parks Department or anyone else knows of anything, just let us know, and we'll be happy to take a look. For more information on any of those programs, again, call the Parks and Recreation Department, And last but not least, just a reminder, the Commissioners' Spring Blood Drive takes place on Friday, April 20th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Lackawanna County Administration Building. To make an appointment, please contact myself, 570-963-6800, and those direct you to my extension. We'll be happy to put you on the schedule to donate. That's all I have. Are there any questions? Or, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Bob Bowles.
Evening, counsel. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, I'm going to read a couple of letters, Gahan, because we're going to take off where we left off last week. Got a letter in the mail. After last night's meeting, Gahan said you could blank yourself. I'm going to leave these here to make them part of the record. Next letter, Mr. Bowles, I was at a St. Pat's Parade Dinner a couple of weeks ago. Bill Gahan was telling people a skunk like you is not going to force them into investigating Mulligan. I'd like these made as part of the record. You made a comment last week, and you can keep that smile, because when I'm done, I'm going to wipe it off your face publicly. You made a comment, a guy who sat Lackawanna County Prison is questioning your integrity. Well, Gahan, let me put it to you this way. You used that statement to defect from the topic of the city garage. You made a personal, not about city business, or to reason about the garage and what was going on with it. In the rules of council, no person, including members of councils, should use their time during citizen participation to personally insult or attack any individual. You made this personal. You didn't make it about city business. Your claim to fame regarding this whole issue is, I asked you questions, you're a liar. You lied publicly that you had sent the second letter when you did not. You lied about what was going on. You lied about just about everything, your knowledge about the parking garage, your inability to understand what this is all about, the incompetence that you showed in the knowledge of the parking garage was paramount. You wanted to make this personal. Well, I came here to talk about city business, and I've been doing that for years. The issue came about is that you think you're above everybody else. You remind me of some of the leaders I went head-to-head with in the Black Lives Matter, who thought they were more important and better than anyone else, and they were put in their place. What I'm going to do, and if you can continue what you want to do, I'm going to put you in your place, because I know more about you than you think I do, and I don't think your wife and your family will be very happy to see what I want to put on the side of a tractor trailer.
Mr. Bowles, please, please don't bring anyone's family into it. You could criticize the council people, but please don't bring the family's in.
I disagree, Mr. President. He brought out that I was in a county prison, and I wasn't good enough to see him. Ask how many people in here know I was in a county prison? Read the paper, read the Times, there's no secret about it. But read about 25 countries that came here and rode in my truck and talked to me personally. How many came to talk to you as a council member? Zero. You know as much about that parking garage as Basaliga does. He sold his 500 parking spaces. He received almost $5 million. Now he's saying people could park free as long as they want. He's as clueless as you were about what goes on, because he has nothing to say about it. He sold it to the people that run the garage. They paid him for it, and it came out of a city bond that gave them the money in order to pay him. You could have picked up a phone and called the parking garage, talked to Patrick, he was right there. How could I do it just like that, but yet you couldn't take the time? And you represent the city. I don't. I represent myself as a taxpayer and a resident in this city for the last 75 years, and I was insulted by your comments, and I was insulted by your actions. Okay? With Mulligan, I filed with the Attorney General, I want counsel to continue what I started, because it was our money. The school board's doing it with the mechanic that was there. You need to do it, but I don't think Mr. Gahan will take the lead on it, because he was a major supporter of Mr. Mulligan. We know he didn't support the mayor, so. When you want to play with fire, Mr. Gahan, let me tell you something. Remember, it comes back to bite you. You want to play it and make this personal, trust me, my friend, I will, I could think of nothing better. I'd love to make this personal with you, if it comes down to it. And I could assure you, for your insults last week, because you think somebody sat in the county because of a corrupt judicial system we have here, which will come out in the future in the appeals that are filed, I just elected to sit there and get it behind me and worry about it later on. Something you couldn't possibly do, because you wouldn't have had anybody there wiping your nose and taking care of you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
But you want it personal, my friend, you'll have it. I'm going to make these part of the record, if I may, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Les Spindler.
You too. Happy Easter.
Evening, counsel. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Disappointed Councilman Perry isn't here tonight. Last week, in his comments, he said to me he'd make a deal if I stopped talking to him about pit bulls, he'll go after the nonprofits. Well, first of all, I never said a word to Mr. Perry about pit bulls. I've talked about them to the council as a whole. And second of all...
Before you continue, I did forget to mention at the beginning of the meeting that Councilman Perry is with his wife at a doctor's appointment. That's why he's not here tonight, so I just wanted to let you know.
Second of all, he shouldn't have to make a deal for him or everybody else out there, up there, to go after the nonprofits. I've been talking about that for years. Shouldn't be deals. You should go after the nonprofits on your own. Shouldn't have to make deals with the speakers up here. And I never mentioned pit bulls. I mentioned pit bulls and dangerous dogs. I don't want a pit bull legislation, I want dangerous dog legislation. And I did give this paper to everybody up there, among the other ones, about pit bulls. Maryland Court Finds Pit Bulls Are Inherently Dangerous. In Prince George County, Maryland, pit bulls are banned. Pit bulls and pit bull mixes. If anyone's caught having one, they're going to have six months in prison and a $1,000 fine. That's in Maryland, one county in Maryland. You people have no interest in protecting the people in this city. It's a darn shame. All you care about is raising our taxes. Next thing, Mr. Elman stole a lot of my thunderings. I haven't talked about this yet, but I want to talk about reassessment, too. You people are possessed with reassessment, when you don't care a damn about the people in this county. As Ron said, the people voted two to one against reassessment. What part of that don't you understand? The people don't want it, as you five up there do. It just proves you don't give a damn about the people you're supposed to represent. Moving on, on a happy note, I was so proud of those kids that marched over the weekend against gun violence. There was hundreds of them that marched from Scranton High School to the courthouse. And I hope the politicians take notice, especially the Republicans, because they're the ones that aren't against gun violence, because they're not against guns, because they're afraid of the NRA. And this morning, on the local news, it showed a story of a student from Parkland High School speaking about how excited he was about all the people that marched all over the country against gun violence. And so he's going to do everything in his power to get everybody his age that's able to vote registered and try and stop this gun violence. The only way to stop it is vote all these Republicans out of office, because the Republicans don't want gun legislation, because they're afraid of the NRA, they're controlled by the NRA, just like the jerk that's in the White House. When these shootings happened, he said he's going to raise the age to 21 to buy guns. And the NRA spoke up, he said, no, I'm not going to raise the age to 21. In my eyes, the NRA is as guilty as these people killing these kids in high schools. In my mind, the NRA is a bunch of murderers themselves. Something should be done with them. Moving on, Councilman Rogan, our comments aren't being transcribed, because you said it saves $5,000 a year. That's a drop in the bucket. You don't have a problem with the hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on attorneys on the sewer sale. So we could spend hundreds of thousand dollars for that, but we want to save measly $5,000 to squash the voice of the people here.
I think we need to save money everywhere.
It's wrong.
And we disagree on that.
You didn't speak up about those attorneys getting hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I voted for every piece, every motion that was made for full disclosure on those fees. I voted for every one.
I think it's wrong. Our voices should be heard. I don't care if it's on TV or whatever. I've been coming to these meetings long before you've been on council, and they've always been transcribed. And now all of a sudden, we want to save $5,000, while we're throwing all kinds of other money out the window. And that's another thing. If I run over five minutes, I'm going to keep talking, because last week, Jack Finerty was well over five minutes here, and no bell rang. Does that rule just pertain to certain people?
Well, the bell rings at five minutes, but speakers are usually allowed to finish their thought, just as...
Jack Finerty, I timed it, he spoke for well over five minutes, and there was no bell. So if what's good for one is good for everybody.
Thank you. Fay Ferranas?
Fay Ferranas, Scranton. Is there going to be a meeting on Monday?
Yes.
Okay. I had a question I wrote down for you to answer. How do you justify not obeying the laws of the city council, of the city home roof charter?
What laws are you referring to?
I was referring to the law that says there shall be a meeting every week in Scranton, city council. I've asked you this before, and you refuse to answer my question.
Attorney menor, do you want to address this, so this can be put to bed once and for all?
The word "shall" has been interpreted...
"Shall" means "must."
It does not.
Look it up.
The word "shall" has been interpreted...
You know what, you're right. I encourage everyone to type into Google.
Stop, stop the time on this, please.
Does "shall" mean "must?", and see what the US Supreme Court ruled on it.
Could you please stop the time here, if he's going to speak on my time?
Will you ask, do you want Attorney menor to answer, or no?
I can answer after.
Go ahead.
He said he would answer after, if you would like.
Okay, so I'm asking you, how do you justify not obeying the laws? This isn't the only law that you'd break. You broke the laws for the sewer authority deals with the thousands of dollars, with all contracts. There's many laws you broke. How do you justify breaking the law, Mr. Rogan? How do you justify breaking the law, Mr. Rogan?
Fay, that's your interpretation of the law. Every attorney that we have spoken to has felt otherwise. I know you don't have a legal degree and none of us up here do either.
Then why does the Home Rule Charter say there shall be a meeting every week?
Why do you believe that "shall" means "must"? Have you, have you looked at, have you done legal research on it? Because our attorney has. We actually just discussed it before the meeting today.
I looked it up and "shall" says "must," sort of Marisha Mocker. You think I like coming here? I don't like coming here. I hate coming here. But you make it so that we have to come here because you always do things that are wrong. You especially, Mr. Rogan. And we're tired of it. And I don't know what else to say to you. I will listen to what he says in motions and I'll address it next week. But you still have to justify to the people why you think there shouldn't be a meeting when you don't have a meeting on a Monday night. Your, your idea of that is it's not important, we don't have to have a meeting. But boy, when you were a councilman years ago, when there was a meeting that was missed, you went nuts and said there should be a meeting. You shouldn't take off the month of August. Mr. Evans, did you find out about the garbage fee study that I asked you about?
The study?
You said you would find out that week.
Yes, yes. The study has been received, however, we're not allowed to release it at this point because of the litigation.
But then let me ask you this. This was done years ago, the study, okay? And we haven't heard a word. We did this with the idea that the garbage fee would possibly be lowered. Last year, when we got the garbage fee, the money came in. This was already resolved where it was stated that the records weren't correct. Two years ago, the records weren't correct. But last year, they were gonna be corrected. So, I'm asking you, there's nothing to do with the garbage fee law, legislation. Could you find out from last year's money? Because we didn't take the money in this year. How much money came in and how much money went out towards the expenses of the garbage?
Well, that's, that's the whole entire crux of the lawsuit.
I'm asking you to find out last year's records. That's nothing to do with the lawsuit. I'm asking, that's public record.
It may be public record, but it is part of the lawsuit because that's part of the defense.
So, why can't you find out for the people? How much money came in last year and how much money went out? That's a simple question.
I'll see if I can find out.
That's what I was asking you to do, Mr. Evans, for years and you refused to do it.
I didn't refuse to do it, Fay. Once it got into litigation, everything changes because we're not allowed to talk about it because anything that we say could impact the lawsuit.
Before the lawsuit, Wayne, you gave me no answers for years. You would never, ever...
No, Fay. I gave you the answers, you didn't like the answer I gave you.
That's the same thing you said last time. You never, ever gave me how much money went in and how much money came out. You never did it. You told me to do a right to know. I did a right to know and they never gave me the answer. So, this is all, this is why, this is why you are exceptionally, you do, you know what you do really good, this council? You do very well. You do nothing. You do nothing very well. You don't answer the people. You don't get information for them. You skirt everything. You keep everything hidden so we don't know the truth. Now, Mr. Menora, he hasn't spoken in years. I don't know how he's getting paid. So, tonight he's gonna speak. Well, I'm not gonna agree with him because what he's doing is, he's skipping the real reason why you don't want to have a meeting, because you don't want to. You also mentioned, Mr. Evans, all these other towns have meetings twice a month. But did you notice that those towns get paid $3,600 a year? You get paid $12,500. There's a difference. So, do you see how you spin things and expect people to believe you?
That wasn't, that wasn't a spin. That was, every town, every town I looked at has meetings twice a month or less.
Yes, I know you did. But they didn't get paid $12,500.
I don't know, I didn't check their salaries, but...
Like you, I did. They got paid $1,400 and some of them got paid $3,600 a year.
Well, I think Allentown and the larger ones were probably paid as equal to what we get, but I'll check into that if that's important.
It's amazing that you would find the answer to something.
Thank you.
Well, you won't like the answer anyway, Fay, so...
Because my answer says the truth, yours...
Attorney Menora, do you want to address that before the next speaker?
Sure. Black's Law Dictionary start, is a place where you start. The word "shall" can have mandatory meanings. It also has been interpreted as permissive, which means "may." And it's permissive particularly in situations where it's used in a statute that has other governments above it, such as local ordinance, subject to state and federal legislation, which are, of course, state holidays and federal holidays are all laws passed by the state government and federal government. They take precedent over what is a city ordinance, that's it, or a city home rule charter. So, I understand her position. The word "shall" does have mandatory meanings, but not now, not in this situation.
Thank you, Attorney Menora. Lee Morgan?
You know, I think anyone who's watching this either tonight or in its recorded format or on the internet at some other time, needs to take a look at this, is Scranton's government. And you would wonder why the city's been in distress for over a quarter of a century and is actually bankrupt. And you can't get any answers out of Scranton's government and they're hiding all the time. We couldn't even get the council president to admit how the vote took place about removing, recording the record of citizens who come forward to try to interact with their government. But you know, after coming here for, I don't know, I'll be kind and say 25 years, I'll say it's been much more than that. Nothing good has come from this council in all of that time. It's amazing. And then, Mr. Evans, you're talking about, or Fay was talking about $12,500. I really think that, Mr. Rogan, if you're so concerned about city finances, I think that the council members shouldn't get paid anymore. I think you should have a vote and just abolish it. Because really, we've gotta save the city's money. I mean, didn't you just say that? Well, I think it's time to, like, as the president of council, to bring it up and vote on it and just abolish. Because really, what value do you bring to this city? I'm curious how $5,000 for the parking garages, allegedly from what Mr. Bowles said, went through ABM. And why didn't it come through the city? It's a great question to ask. And you're the hawk that's watching over our government, just like Mr. Wessler did. Took care of Goodwill Industries up on the top of the hill, but when you walk through this city, everybody's in, just in utter poverty. And you're talking about a tax increase or a reassessment. The voters voted no. And you know, when they bring a judge in like Braxton or any visiting judge, you have to ask yourself, why doesn't the local judges want to hear this case? Are they afraid of ramifications of the people voting and then, and don't forget, judges are elected for 10-year terms. But are they afraid that the voters will remove every single one of them? Because don't forget, they get a nice pension and a nice salary and the people are very, very disgusted. But you know, I'd like to change the format here a little bit in what I'm discussing and say this. Anybody who believes that House Bill 76 offers any homeowner, any relief at all, is out of their mind, totally out of their mind. Because what really needs to happen is you need to elect a legislature in Harrisburg that understands something more than politics. They need to start taxing interest on credit. Real simple. MasterCard sends you a bill, 18% interest, tax 3% of it. You got a 4% loan at the bank, tax a half a percent. Start taxing the transfer of money. Don't come back and tax the person at the grocery store. You're taxing the same person who can't pay any more taxes again. Start taxing stocks. Start taxing the wealthy and the movement of massive amounts of money. But you see, we can't do that because we keep electing, I don't know what you'd call yourselves. I mean, I'll let you determine that yourself. But you made, you made a terrible deal with the sewer authority. Terrible. It's beyond terrible. The sewer authority went out and bought all kinds of vehicles, spent all kinds of money, threw money all over the place, and there is no storm water plan. And the residents of the city are gonna pay for that, too. And this, and you know something, the crazy part is, the sewer authority was not created to bail the city out. And in the end, if that flip-flops and the court says that that deal's done, finished, I don't know who's gonna fight Pennsylvania American Water over taking that, that asset back. I have no idea. And I don't know how many hundreds of millions of dollars that's gonna cost. So, I mean, you know, when you sit here, really, honestly, I think you should all resign. I really do. Because I think we've done a great job of masking every question that's been asked from this side for decades. And nothing good has come of it.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Norma Jeffries, and I'm a Scranton resident. And I've missed a couple of meetings, but I'll start off by saying, to give hope to anyone out there, I had a preemie baby, grandbaby born, at 2.2 pounds. And he's doing great. So, he's up to 4.2 pounds within seven weeks. He's doubled his weight. So, anyone out there who may be in the situation of having a preemie baby, they do miraculous work with them and just to give them encouragement, you know? So, Jasper David is doing well. But I'm not here to talk about him tonight. I'm here to, I was hoping that Mr. Perry was here tonight. Because I understand that last week, there is money that has been allocated for street signs and that the Liquor Control Board, I guess, is going to be allocating or putting that money aside. There is two articles in the paper, I don't know if I can mention these ladies' names that wrote to the editor complaining about the street signs in the city and how difficult it is to get around. And they weren't new to the area. So, I just identified with them because I was in the same situation, that I was getting lost in the city as well. And when I bought my little spreadsheet that I had passed out and given to everyone, you know, and it was just good to see that something was done and some of the street signs did go up in the neighborhood in the Hill section. One of the ladies is from the Hill section, so I'm hoping that the money that has been allocated, that I'm not sure how they do it or how they decide how that money will be allocated and what signs will go up. But I would be glad to work with whoever it is and to help them, you know, right around. I'm sure there's got somebody that knows which signs are missing. But it was a big plus to the area of where I live. So, I wanted to thank him personally for mentioning that, that the money is being allocated. It was back in April of last year. So, it's been a year and I say thank you to you all. Also, I wanted to mention, Mr. Gahn, I don't know if you saw the article in the paper yesterday. They did quite an article on the museum downstairs. And, you know, that's one of my other projects, but because of, life gets in the way, I had started to gather some data as to why that museum should stay open. Because it was up for discussion that they were going to not renew the lease. I think we just renewed it for a year. I was out of town this weekend, but it seems that they had over 100 people at the museum this weekend to see Ulysses S. Grant give his presentation. I would have liked to have seen that. So, I hope they recorded it, that I'll be able to take a look at that. So, those are the things that I have to say and just to let you know that I am working on that project. And I just hope that we can extend the lease for that property down there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hi, my name is Maeve Mariotti. I'm 15. I've lived in Scranton my whole life. I was born here. And in light of the recent incidents in Parkland, Florida, where 17 people were killed, and also more recently, the shooting at Great Mills High School in Maryland, where two people were killed and one person was injured, I wanted to speak about gun violence and how we can contribute to the conversation here in the city. My whole life, I've lived in fear because I've seen the senseless, the tragedy brought on by senseless gun violence. Because I know that when I go to the movies, when I go to the store, when I go to school to get my education, I could be killed at any second because of the lack of common sense gun laws in this country and in the state of Pennsylvania. This year in 2018, yesterday, there had been 12,570 incidents from guns. And today, the number is at 12,814. And of these incidents, 459 of them have been in Pennsylvania. We are not even halfway through the year and there have already been 50 mass shootings. And I just want everyone to remember that these aren't just numbers, these are people that have lives and families and futures. And these futures are being taken away from them at the hands of another. In the past two decades, the NRA has spent more than $210,000 to support members of Pennsylvania's congressional delegation. Our politicians prefer making an extra dollar over protecting the lives of your children and the people who support them, who have voted them into office. The marches and the rallies that took place this weekend are over, but the conversation is not and it won't be until we see the change that we are seeking. So, today, I'm here because although I can't vote yet, I can ask the adults who have been voted into public office by the people of Scranton to stand up for the citizens they represent. So, I am asking you, the councilmen, to write letters on behalf of the city to Senators Casey and Toomey and to our state representatives, strongly urging them to write and vote for bills that enforce stricter gun reform and to get rid of the lax laws with loopholes which allow firearms to get into the wrong hands and to tell them to stop accepting donations from the National Rifle Association. I'm also asking that you use your voices as members of public office to speak up and to bring attention to the issues of gun violence here in the city. Lastly, I want to remind you and I want you to remind everybody else that this isn't a fight about political party, this is a fight between life and death. Because if we don't do something about the problem, the children of Scranton will be next. And that is something that I'm not willing to see and I hope you are not either. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hello, City Council. Glenis Johns, North Scranton, taxpayer and resident. I just want to say thank you to the young lady, 15, who came out here to speak on behalf of the gun violence and things that are happening here in our nation that affect us on the local level. So, thank you so much. We don't typically get to see kids in the high school coming and participating in city council, so I encourage you to make sure that you have one of your classmates every single week come here and press them because that is the only way something is going to happen. And we understand what is happening in our school districts and it like seriously needs to change. So, continue to press them, let them know that these students care, that you all care and keep coming back. I just felt like I really needed to get up here and say that to you all. I think, like everyone says, we're in a space where we feel like things aren't happening for the people, things aren't happening for residents, things aren't happening for taxpayers. So, I really would like to see this year in particular, we're already four months in, more communication between citizens and councilmen. Like, I think that we can do so much better and have so many more beautiful things and money and better education for these students. But like, what is it that we have to do as residents to make that happen? What is it that we actually have to do? I feel like we always are putting in suggestions, but we're not implementing plans. And I feel like that's on the same side of the elective officials, but at the same side as residents. I don't want to ramble, but I just want to keep that into the city's mind and mental space. I think, I see here, every time I come here, there's always a clash of just misunderstanding between elected officials and residents. So, yeah, I'm hoping by the end of this year, like, we can really start making change. Just so everybody knows, Election Day is May 15th for the primaries, so keep that in your, keep that in mind. Start looking out for who are running. April 15th is the last day to register to vote, so if you know people who have not registered, make sure that they get out there and do that so they can represent those who can't vote, like our friends that are in high school. So, thanks a lot. Glenis Johns.
Thank you very much.
Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. I decided it was time for some... I decided it was time for some show and tell. This is, this is in its original package. This is pepper spray. It's legal in Pennsylvania. It knocks down any attacker for 45 minutes with no permanent harm. Use of this substance for any purpose other than self-defense is a crime under the law, and contents are dangerous, use with care. Misuse is punishable by jail, fines, or both. And it also has a dye in it, so that if someone tried to break in your house, say, because I wouldn't even take this, carry it around, and you sprayed them in the face, they could be identified by the police. Now, we have two proponents here with the gun issue, and one is strangely enough, out of my cold, dead hands, and I don't care much for assault rifles and so forth, but they will be grandfathered in even under the Constitution unless you get it through the Supreme Court. And what I'm recommending is that teachers, there's bigger units, effective up to, like, 25 feet, perfect accuracy, and 100 feet, very cheap, and if you train teachers to protect the students, a certain handful of them, I think it would be better than jumping in front of them, getting gunned down, and knowing while you're falling that the kid you jumped in front of is next. So, I'm very serious about this issue, and I think that schools should provide better protection for their students. And it doesn't have to be somebody under 21. Down at the casino in Las Vegas, the guy was 58 years old. You know, it could be somebody that was just goofy. And years back, when this all started, it was a veteran that had problems, and he went to a schoolyard in Stockton, that was the first time we heard about it. And then there was the Texas Towers deal, where the man climbed up there and he had a brain tumor. Who knew, you know? So, on this reassess, I'll move on here. Oh, by the way, dangerous dogs, six bucks, okay? Don't watch Fifi being torn to shreds. And the reassess, on 511 taxes, we can only tax based on 2% of the city's value. We may lose here. So, that's my total reason for reapproval of reassessment, and some people are getting too good of a deal, and some people are getting a raw deal. The sewer, the thing that I was worked up about was the work done in the interim between the proposed sale and the sale, and we were not compensated for that, and it was millions and millions of dollars. So, that's what, I expect attorneys to charge money. And, you know, my closing on my house, I buy a little abode, and the next thing I know, I'm paying out $6,200 in closing costs, so, you know, a few percentage points of the sewer sale is, but I don't feel we're adequately protected with the work that was required by the federal government, and then the sewer authority said, well, we're not paying for that. Maybe they wanted to do something different, I don't know, but I think something could have been worked out better there. And, you know, do you know anybody, Pat, that's a Democrat, a bigger Democrat than me?
Not many.
Not many. Okay, well, the point in being is that, more or less, I'm kind of in between there on this gun business, because the government, when I was 13 years old, we were being trained to jump under our desks, because the bombs were coming, you know? And both sides, the Russians and the Americans, were flying over our heads with nuclear-assured destruction, so, you know, who's the government sometimes to say what? You know, look up Matewan and the Molly Maguires, and you'll find out. Oh, and Homestead, Andrew Carnegie, people were shot for asking for a better wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, counsel. My name is Edward McCarchick, lifelong resident of Scranton and taxpayer. This is only my third, third meeting, so I'm not quite aware of everything, but I was just reading this in regard to some of the speakers. No person shall address counsel for more than five minutes unless extended by the counsel president. I don't remember hearing a bell when Mr. Finerty spoke last week, but I believe he asked for permission from the council if his time went over five minutes. And he was speaking about the library and all the new, new features and remodel and everything, and I'm glad he went over his time, because he'd said that there was going to be a space for possible music and acoustic acts, which I'm a musician, an acoustic musician, and I wouldn't have found that out if he hadn't been allowed to speak. And then, like I said, I believe he had permission to extend his time. And that's, the next one says, "Five-minute time limit shall include any time that council members may speak in response to citizen questions or comments if an immediate response is requested by a citizen." I take that to mean if I ask a question and you take time, you take, you answer it there, that counts towards my five minutes, which is right in the rules of counsel here, so I don't understand why there's questions about that, but no person, including members of council, shall use their time during citizens' participation to personally insult or attack any visual. I haven't seen any attacks by any members of the council, so I will go back and watch the videos again, but I think counsel has shown remarkable patience in dealing with certain heated discussions that I've seen in the last, well, three weeks now. And finally, I would like to commend the previous, the previous speakers regarding their views and opinions on gun violence, especially the school. I won't call them children or kids, I will call them young adults, because that's what they are, the young adults whose lives are in very much danger, going to public schools and private schools and whatever, movie theaters, like was mentioned. And I applaud their efforts and their enthusiasm, they did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, real quickly, I would just like to commend all the students who took part in the March for Our Lives demonstrations against gun violence, both locally in Washington over the weekend. Their courage and passion to stand up and take, take action is just truly inspiring, and I urge you to just keep at it, don't get discouraged. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Briefly, I would like to concur with that. As someone who was a, hate to give away my age, a teenager in the 60s, I totally understand what is going on right now. There's no excuse, if we can't find a way to solve this problem, shame on this country. And I have all the respect for the, the young adults that are trying to get their voice heard. It's an issue that's far too important for us to ignore, so keep up the good work. The new parking system at the marketplace at Steamtown begins today. I think the resolution on how to handle the rates and the validation system at the marketplace by NDC and ABM was a fair and equitable solution to a very difficult problem. Also on the parking issues, Representatives of NDC and hopefully ABM will be attending a public caucus in city council chambers on May 21st at 5:15 PM. It is expected that we'll be giving city council an update on what they've been doing so far, and what they, what their future plans may be for the parking system, and of course, field questions from counsel. I was going to talk about the reassessment tonight, I'm going to let that simmer for another week or so, but I will say, a couple speakers commented about the vote. The question was invalidated by the courts, it meant nothing. It was, it was, excuse me, I'm talking. The question was designed to fail. The question basically read, "Let us borrow $4 million so we can raise your taxes." No one is going to vote for that question. So, I don't have much credence in that 26,000 versus 13, because the people were deceived. So, with that said, I'll comment on the reassessment in future weeks. All I know is tax equity is a right for every single citizen and property owner in this county, and the system is not equal. The system protects the wealthy, the system protects the well-off, that who is getting all the appeals, that who gets to hire all the fancy attorneys, not the little old lady who's paying her fair share day in and day out. So, this is a very volatile issue, I understand that, but we have to get the facts around this issue, and I certainly appreciate everyone's opinion, I happen to disagree, because that's just my opinion, and I'll continue to be a voice for reassessment. That's all I have tonight. Oh, one more thing, if I may. One more thing, it's all I, Mr. Gahn. I want to leave you this one quote by Stephen Hawking. "The greatest enemy of knowledge is not ignorance, it's the illusion of knowledge." That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few. First of all, Ms. Mariotti got up and spoke on it, I appreciate that, very well said. I, too, was impressed with the rally that was held this weekend, the Never Again Movement. And I do think, as one of the, one of the young people had said, it's not a movement, or it's not a moment, it is a movement. So, I am very encouraged by all the young people that are continuing to voice their concerns and to get involved, and I would encourage young people to run for office and to continue to be interested in local government. We have another young student who has been coming to the meetings, Abby Walsh, she goes to Holy Cross High School, and she wants to be involved in local government. So, she has been coming to the caucuses, into the meetings, and we're actually discussing how we can get young people even more involved in our government. So, I just want to say thank you again, that was great. I attended a Bull's Head Neighborhood Meeting, and one of the main issues was the Lace Works Project, so I did ask Mrs. Reed if she could get an update on how that is progressing. Last week, I mentioned the issue with the business administrator moving from his position to a position in OECD. We did receive the title of the position, it is the Economic Development Specialist, and the salary is $43,000. Now, my question was to the administration, how can they make that move, because there's no line item in the budget for that position? We did get a response from the city solicitor, and she said the following, "The salary for the position of Economic Development Specialist is a hybrid of two vacant positions within OECD. This salary entails an intra-departmental transfer authorized by the business administrator pursuant to 6-13 of the city's Administrative Code, which expressly states, 'The business administrator shall have the power to authorize the transfer of any unexpendable balance of any appropriation item or any portion thereof within a department.'" And then it goes on to cite File of Counsel Number 29 of 1994, which was repealed by File of Counsel Number 195 of 2003, and it goes on to say that "The administration was acting well within its authority to conduct the intra-departmental transfer for the salary of the newly-appointed Economic Development Specialist." I did ask Attorney Menora on the caucus to research this further, because my concern here, I understand that they combined two salaries from two vacant positions, but my concern is that the title, Economic Development Specialist, is not an actual line item in the budget. So, I am concerned, because this, we're dealing with federal funding from HUD, we wouldn't want to put that in danger, have to pay money back. So, I did ask Attorney Menora if he would look into whether or not the administration is violating the Administrative Code or the Home Rule Charter. Again, I understand combining two vacant positions, what I don't understand is that this council voted on the 2018 budget, and that position, Economic Development Specialist, was not in the budget, where there was no line item for it. So, hopefully, we'll have an answer on that by next week. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a couple items on agenda items. Item 6A will be tabled this evening and sent to the County Planning Commission for a 30-day comment period. The legislation is tentatively expected to appear before counsel again on April 30th, with a public hearing to be scheduled for that night as well. I did want to bring up a bit of good news, I know we had so much positive energy in here tonight, so we'll keep it going. We did receive, this is a press release from the mayor's office that was issued today regarding the city's streetlight program, and the release reads, "This year, the city of Scranton applied for the Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence and is pleased to announce that it has received this honored distinction for its LED streetlight and conversion project. The awards for environmental excellence are awarded annually by the Department of Environmental Protection to highlight the best in environmental innovation and expertise. This project focused on replacing streetlight fixtures, refinishing painted aging poles, and installing lighting controls. By replacing the streetlight system, the city reduced its energy consumption and maintenance, improved optical control visibility, increased safety, and decreased hazardous waste and energy consumption. LED technology has been found to be the least environmentally harmful lighting source available. The system also managed software in real time and provides the city with data on use in action and histories, and diagnostic register system failures, load failures, field outages, and line volt changes. LED lighting is increasingly emerging as a way to capture energy efficiency savings locally, statewide, nationally, and across the globe. The new LED lighting is saving the city of Scranton approximately $32,000 per month." That's a, quite a staggering sum of money. "The project also has major benefits to the overall community of Scranton with respect to safety, including facilitating the work of neighborhood watch groups and law enforcement." So, I did want to read that, a bit of good news to end the meeting, and I do want to thank Mayor Courtenay and his administration for their leadership on this issue and getting the streetlight program up and running and out through, throughout our, every, every nook and cranny of Scranton, and that's all.
5B for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number is noted entitled Arley, North Main, and Parker, for the receipt of grant funds from the Automated Red Light Transportation Enhancement Grant Program in order to provide funding for traffic signal at the intersection of North Main Avenue and Parker Street.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a loan-to-grant agreement and make a loan grant from the city of Scranton's Business and Industry Loan-to-Grant Program. Project number is noted in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to Jed Pool Tools Incorporated to assist an eligible project.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the Certificate of Appropriateness for Global Energy Services, 20 West Aylesbury Road, Timonium, Maryland 21093, for replacement of all single-pane windows with new double-pane, energy-efficient composite wood hung windows, consistent with existing windows, no brickwork necessary, situated at the Scranton School District Administration Building, 425 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, File of the Counsel Number 9, 2018, and ordinance amending File of the Counsel Number 12, 1996, as amended, entitled, "The City of Scranton Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance to amend the approval process for lotline adjustments, annexations, and minor revisions of approved plans."
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I would like to make a motion to table item 6A to comply with the 30-day public comment period by the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Following the 30 days, council will hold a public hearing prior to the final vote.
Second.
So, motion on the floor and a second, anyone on the question?
Anyone on the question?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and 6A is tabled.
Yes. Excuse me, on the vote, that was on the question, so all those, you'll need to do it one more time, please.
Oh, all those in favor? Okay.
In the first part?
We have to vote again?
That was on the motion, so you need to vote to pass reading by title. On the question, Councilman Donahue made the motion to table.
Oh, that's correct. So on the...
In the first part, yes. So after, on the question?
So it will be you for reading by title.
I apologize, I'm at a loss here. Okay.
And then we just vote on it.
Right here.
So all those in favor of 6A as amended signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and finally, so moved. Thank you, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 22, 2018, appointment of Tera Man Shankar, 840 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission, effective February 27, 2018. Mr. Shankar will be replacing Rabbi Moshe Sacks, who resigned on September 18, 2017. Mr. Shankar will fill the unexpired term of Rabbi Moshe Sacks, which is scheduled to expire on October 14, 2018.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 23, 2018, reappointment of Joseph D. Antoni, 1331 Cornell Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. D. Antoni's prior term expired on December 31, 2017, and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018, and will expire on December 31, 2022.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 24, 2018, reappointment of John Granahan, 1504 Price Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Granahan's prior term expired on December 31, 2017, and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018, and will expire on December 31, 2022.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 25, 2018, reappointment of William Lazar, 677 Mary Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Lazar's prior term expired on December 31, 2015, and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018, and will expire on December 31, 2020.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 26, 2018, reappointment of David Fanoof, 1812 Academy Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Fanoof's prior term expired on December 31, 2014, and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018, and will expire on December 31, 2019.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 27, 2018, reappointment of Jerry Weinberger Esquire, 611 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Weinberger's prior term expired on December 31, 2014, and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018, and will expire on December 31, 2019.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gohn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7F legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.